A B H D Brian.
Yeah.
You have the gold star.
I'm ready.
The golden paper?
You got one? Yeah.
Charlie got the golden palace this year.
There you go, it's all that. How's your head doing?
Like, I was only up for four days, but she's not traumatized. And either these nice ones, she's okay. She was feeling actually good. Yeah, I know. No, I don't think we need to take FaceTime.
Did you watch the video?
Honestly, I thought it was gonna be a day. I, I. I expected, I expected you to look at my face. Your homeless one wasn't for me.
True. It's true.
Girls, zero on T.
I don't remember. Their kids are a couple years older. Like, yeah. No, they're really nice.
I probably would drive them out.
She's, she's tiptoeing. She's gaiting around.
On the, oh, at the very end of the row?
Yeah. We're talking, yeah.
Something weird, like they're not married, or like.
Not that you do that.
I know, but I'm glad they have something Ray has talked about.
Again, we'll go with those three without.
Sorry.
Who are you?
Does the town have to settle that for them?
I don't know, like what the.
Landowner use.
I don't know. I don't know, but I don't want to get worse.
So, is there a nameless, or an item?
I didn't know how to go five of them.
I think like two or three, right? How many switches there for lights in here?
There are.
That's not a lot, right? It's like they're all wired together? Oh, not actual light switches.
Do you think everyone, thank you for coming. Do you think staying and joining the public relations? I put allegiance to the by of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and no bounds. The first order of business this evening is action on minutes. Let's see what action the board wishes to take regarding approval of the minutes for the meeting held on September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Right motion. Motion approved. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval of the minutes for the meeting held on September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five? It's unanimous, thank you. And the unto citizen comments. We've got anyone here from the public that wishes to speak this evening?
Hello, my name is Melissa Wilson, and I'm a resident of Bryan.
Hello, my name is Hope Keith, and I'm a resident of Bethel.
Hello, my name is Addie Moser, and I'm a resident of Greenwood. We are eighth graders and we are a part of the public relations class. We are here tonight to talk about what we do as a PR class and the skills we learn within the class. Public relations class is a UA. Eighth graders can pick for a class to take all year long. In PR, we have fourteen students that decided to join this year. Meredith LaPointe, who is part of our class, said she joined PR because she wanted to seek opportunities to make decisions in round assemblies. The job as PR class is to run the assemblies that we have once a month. We do front challenges that we call rap battles that, that get students involved, and we create star awards that students can receive as a positive recognition.
The mission of the TMS PR class is to make good things happen that promote students' involvement. We will motivate and empower students to positive contribute towards school by recognizing students' strengths, organizing fun activities, and sharing information in school and with our community. We hope to encourage students to work together as a rap group and build relationships with each other. So far, we have done a fun rap battle during our first assembly. We also do morning announcements of each rap group daily. Announcements include fun questions and points to show their rebel pride every Friday. Bennett Inman joined PR because he was looking forward to being a morning announcer and being involved in assemblies. Part of our mission is to share information with our community, and that's why we're here tonight. We also plan to submit articles to the Bethel citizens, and we will be running just all the star assemblies throughout the year and spearheading all the fundraisers to support all the good things that happen at TMS.
It's important to note that our public relations class is not just a required class. Well, it's not a required class. Each student chose to take this class. Sofia Ferrera said she joined PR because she wanted to have more opportunities to help the school. Some of these skills that we learn is to get comfortable with public, public speaking and writing for a variety of purposes. We will use technology to learn about designing flyers, editing videos, and creating slide shows. We all have our own strengths and weaknesses, but we hope to learn from each other's strengths to improve our weaknesses. PR class is an opportunity to be a positive leader at TMS. When Lily Lewis was six, was in sixth and seventh grade, she looked up to the kids that were in PR. Now Lily gets to be the person that others look up to. We want to thank the board for providing time during citizen comments for us to share TMS news. We look forward to keeping you updated with all the good things that we are going to accomplish this year.
Is there any else here from the public relations?
Hi, Jenny. Nice job, girls. I should have been in public relations class. Um, so my name is Rebecca Howe Coolidge, and I am a lifelong resident of Bethel. And I am here tonight with Jenny Smith. She is not a Bethel resident. But, um, we're here on behalf of Boosters because we needed to, um, tell us to all support Boosters to discuss some things that we wanted to bring to the school board to get approval for. We are not asking for any money, okay? Saying that right now, we're not asking for any money. Um, but we do need permission. Um, we have a couple projects in the works, one being we want to get dugouts on the boys' baseball, um, field at Crescent Park. Um, because if anyone has ever watched baseball games there, they don't have dugouts, and it's kind of, you know, not, it's a safety issue. Um, so that's a project that we're working on right now that we want to, and we have, um, businesses that are looking at donating their time. Um, we have Savage, um, Construction, um, or Land Development, um, who would be doing the land prep, um, for the dugouts. And then we have Davis Concrete, who would be, um, donating, um, the concrete for that. And then Boosters would be, we haven't found a person yet, but that would actually be doing the remaining construction of the dugouts. Um, and they would be eighteen feet by twenty feet, a standard dugout size. Um, so we have that one that we are looking at doing. And then also, we want to look at expanding the snack shack on the football field. If anyone has ever worked in the snack shack up there, they know it needs to be bigger, because it is really small in there. Um, we also share that space with, um, Telstar Youth Football, so storage issue, it's just, it's really, we're looking at, um, just expanding it out, um, six feet. Um, which again, Boosters would be paying for, and we actually have already have Hancock Lumber that is looking at donating materials for it. Um, and then we, um, might have someone else that's gonna do some materials and the person that would be work, doing the work, doing work, um, but also potentially be donating it. But if not, then we would be paying for it. Um, but we are just looking at getting those, um, okayed or at least starting, putting on the agenda, so hopefully maybe by springtime. Hmm, I have dugouts. Anyone have any questions? Sounds easy. Everything sounds easy, it's just no problem. This has been on my agenda for like, I don't know, the past year, so we're here now just to try to get it ongoing. So, we're just trying to improve everything that we can as far as related to sports. No one had questions? Oh, that was easy.
Great french fries, though. It's like great french fries this weekend.
Thank you, that was my job.
That is, the other thing we need to do, better electric, so we can have two fry leathers, so we don't have a line of people deep to catch up on fries.
Yeah, we're not saying, ah, it'll be a twenty minute wait for french fries, let me take your name and I'll holler at you. Yeah. Thank you.
Hi, everybody, my name is Trista Moran. I am currently homeschooling three of my children. Um, two of them have gone right through the works through Crescent Park. Um, just a personal decision we decided to do. Um, and so far, things are going great. Um, they've played field hockey this year and really loved it, and are looking forward to basketball and possibly softball in the spring. Um, there are some other activities that occur in the middle school that we were hoping to get our girls and any other homeschoolers around included on. Um, let me just start here. So, uh, homeschooling is a growing educational choice in Maine, and many families seek the hybrid approach, one that allows their children to receive a personalized education at home while still participating in the public schools. It offers collaboration benefits not only for homeschoolers, but also the school community as a whole, by fostering diversity, increasing participation, and building those community ties. Main law supports this partnership. Under Title twenty A, five twenty-one A, homeschooler students are allowed to participate at public schools, co-curricular, extracurricular, and even some academic programs. This law ensures equal access without overburdening the schools, since many of these programs are already in existing infrastructure and funding is already in place. Including homeschoolers, it strengthens our educational ecosystem. It supports parental choice, it meets children's social and developmental needs, and it demonstrates that our school district values inclusion and flexibility in education. Let's continue to build a system that works for all Maine children, whether they're educated at home or in the classroom, and I urge you to uphold and support the policies that embrace homeschool inclusion. Thank you for your time, Ms. Moore.
Is there anyone else here that would like to speak? Moving on to board member comments. Is there any board members that would like to share the season?
All right, so, on Saturday, I met for the delegates assembly. We met, um, on the eighteenth from eight thirty in the morning till twelve thirty in the afternoon. During that time, um, all of the elections were what we started with. Um, all elections took place, and all nominations that you guys would have received in your emails from MSMA, um, were elected as presented. We are Region Six, so that means our, um, person that's representing us is now rich ruling, um, in case anyone wanted to know. After that, they went through the resolutions. Um, all of them except for one were adopted as presented. Um, we did entertain many, many, many amendments that were, none of them received a two-thirds vote they needed to pass. Um, so all resolutions went through, like I said, as, um, as they were sent and presented to everyone except for one. Um, I should have noted better which specific one it was, however, they plan to re-present it next year. Um, after that, they went through the bylaw and Constitution amendment changes, and everything again was adopted as presented. So, it was a long meeting, um, but it all went through smoothly, and basically, um, everything they were looking to change happened, so.
Thank you, Destiny. I think we're putting the, the timing to the assembly. Any other board members second?
Yeah, two things. One, just wanted to thank the PR students for coming in. I love the tradition of you guys taking this class coming in and sharing your perspective, but having a student perspective on the board is super important. So, thank you for coming. Um, I know today's probably gonna be a lot of TFA love, um, but I have a student who's a freshman this year, so, um, I just wanted to report out on the Blueberry Cove trip. So, it was their first overnight. Um, they went over to the UMaine four-H campus on the coast, and they did a little ride there. Um, they had great weather, great time, a lot of the kids had never even been over to the coast. Um, they hiked coastal trails, they explored the ecosystems and tide pools, caught and measured an invasive species of crab called the green crab. Um, and my kid used like positive slay when I asked how it was going, so.
Can you do something? Any other board members that would like to share the season?
I just have a question for Mark. What's the status of the GT program here?
So, we, we will finally hire a tutor, and she is working now with the building administrators to go through the screening process, to learn the student population over the schedule. Uh, we're also working with Mrs. Pickarola in retirement to hand off, and she has to do the COGAT training, so we're hoping the next week or two to be underway. So, we had to be hired, they backed out, found somebody else to step in, so now we're just getting going.
Okay, good.
Are they involving Bushman now?
Yes.
I don't think qualifying. Is it, is it scores or recommendation? How do they qualify for GT?
Uh, so, it's, the initial screening is from test force, standardized test force, and then they go through a COGAT, uh, testing for an additional screening layer to get all the data, and then from there, um, they go through and see if qualifies, or they just offer the qualifications, and the families have to accept them.
Any other board members comments, questions?
I think I'm the PTA.
Uh, yes.
Seth, Seth loves to get the PTA.
Oh, I do. You're welcome. I'm supposed to do it right now? I thought it was usually during you.
I can add a little secret answer, but it doesn't matter.
Moving on to the chairman's report. Uh, get another plug for the MSAA Main Conference, only to say that I'll be doing this Friday, so if anybody wants to join in carpool, they're welcome to come to UMaine Augusta. Uh, last Thursday, Stephanie and I hung out over at, at Telstar Freshman Academy and took part in the move relays, which was an incredible experience. It was really neat to witness that learning environment, and also to be a part of it. We worked with the kids and were tasked building simple machines and had a supplies list, had trial and have error and execution, and it was a lot of fun. Really interested to see that program in action. The kids really enjoyed it.
It was quite humble, too.
Yeah, it's all absolute.
But we're hoping to make that kind of a, um, a parent day for going forward, because we're struggling to get families down there to actually see it coming. You can hear about it all you want, but if you go down there and actually see it in action, you'd only get half of it. So, we're thinking, and so we kind of went down and gave it to us. And it seems like the perfect day. I mean, it's, it's super fun, the kids are super engaged, and the parents can kind of screw us up and.
Be humble.
Be humble.
Yeah, so I'd encourage, you know, anyone, staff, board members, community members, to get down to TFA, to reach out to myself, Mark, the teachers there, they're happy, you know, they're welcome, and they want people down there to see what's going on, so please do. And, um, I have two girls that attend Telstar High School and play sports, so I was able to get some of that homecoming energy firsthand. It was, it was really exciting to see, you know, all the sports games in action and the preparations for different activities and dance and all the creativity, and just, it's really nice. It seemed as if all the student body and staff and community all getting together to, to celebrate. And we just, we had a lot to do today. And this is just right to conclude the chairman's report. Uh, moving on to upcoming, we'll be doing the board meetings. The next S eighty forty-four board meeting will be Monday, November seventeenth, at six thirty PM here at Telstar Library. The Education Committee will meet Thursday, November thirteenth, at three PM in the Norway Savings Bank Conference Room. Facilities and personnel will meet before the regular board meeting on Monday, November seventeenth, at five fifteen in Conference Room one thirty-one here at Telstar. Finance negotiations committee will be Tuesday, November eighteenth, at five thirty at the central office. Policy committee will be meeting Monday, November third, at ten AM in Conference Room one thirty-one here at Telstar. And the Region Nine Cooperative Board will meet November fifth, at six PM at the Region High School of Polytechnology in Esso. And on to committee reports, recording for the Education Committee, you know, Ms. Fair.
So, the Education Committee, uh, took a field trip down to TFA, uh, last Thursday, last Thursday, um, and it was awesome. It was, um, really exciting to see that program. Um, you know, I think we could talk about it all night long if we wanted to, but the takeaway that I got from it was that, um, just how happy the kids were, which was really nice to see. Everybody was in a good mood, the teachers were in a good mood. It was informal in all the right ways, you know, it wasn't like, it was, it was just really good, and all of the kids seemed not bothered to be there, which was, um, you know, e- exciting. So, I think there's some really exciting things, um, happening down there, and I'm excited to see, um, you know, different ways that you got, I think the parent day is awesome and different ways, um, of thinking creatively on how we can share that information out to the community, um, in, in new and different ways to, um, you know, work to try to change the narrative a little bit on that program. Because there's some, some really good things happening down there, both academically and, you know, all the other stuff. That was great.
Hope there's still the team personnel. Mr. Kendall.
Uh, yeah, we just met before this, um, the board meeting here. We went over some job descriptions, we're kind of taking little chunks at a time to review and update and change anything that, uh, we might see in there. Uh, we did have a presentation from Siemens to go over some, um, energy, um, future planning, so essentially, uh, the lighting, we are already underway, but building envelope while the fiberglass around Telstar is a huge piece of it. Um, the building, heating and cooling systems, HVACs, things like that, they did a walkthrough last year. Um, they kind of just presented this with our, our general numbers of how much we spend and where we sit as far as, um, national average for how much energy we use, which we are well above the national average, which we kind of knew, uh, just with aging systems and infrastructure. So, looking at that, um, and trying to come up with a short term, mid term, and long term plan, um, and see what else we can do for the facilities. And then we also briefly talked about the lighting project, which is still happening, um, but they're delayed on their current project, so they're coming, but we'll just give a little bit.
Miss Brown. And for the Policy Committee, Ms. Rebecca. Oh, sorry, it's getting, sorry, I need some negotiations. Sorry, Jared.
Hello, um, so we met and we got an update on the current year's capital projects, um, how they're progressing and how they're tracking to budget. Um, Mark gave us some update on RideSource and how that partnership is working this year, which is very well. And then we got an update on some brunettes that he's been able to use, um, and complete some projects with.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Um, Policy Committee met, uh, it's, it's always funny to report out in the Policy Committee, because you're about to see everything when we turn up. Um, so we did, um, rework the mission statements, unless, if you go to the very, very ends, just the blue is the new one, just so you don't get confused. Um, but we'll, we'll do that after. And then, um, so that will be a first reading, and then two second readings were just tweaks, minor revisions from last time, our, from our full board meeting. And we did start talking about a new one, but we kind of tabled it due to possibly get updating with addition that we may need to move forward. One second, sure.
And forty-nine, Mr. Brown.
Unfortunately, I have nothing to report. Most of the meetings are an executive session and plans and strategies, and two buildings are still not open. Along with eight hundred thousand dollars that needs to be spent by December first. In equipment for those buildings.
Great money.
Great money.
Both the way. They won't lose it?
They'll lose it, yeah. Yeah, we did direct, we gave the, uh, the director permission, if you will, or whatever, to get going and purchase it and build a building like they're gonna be used, so. Watching that money just to be here.
Just ask, anybody been fired?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
And I will now turn it over to Mr. Kenny for the superintendent's report and his comments.
Uh, so, good evening, everybody. So, no appointments to transfers at this time. We have a couple scheduled B appointments shifting into the next sports season, already thinking about that. Head boys basketball coach, Tim O'Connor, for the middle school. Head girls basketball coach, Gabe Barry, and assistant girls basketball coach, Erin DePere. I did put out, uh, posts today looking, we still have middle school boys assistant coach for basketball and high school girls assistant coach for basketball open. And Gail is in talks with somebody for middle school Alpine, we're just waiting to get finalization on that. Those are our last three coaching positions to be filled for the winter. Uh, Telstar High School head boys basketball coach, Ryan Kimball, and assistant boys basketball coach, Shane Wilson. Head girls basketball, Stephen Pelletier. Alpine scheme, William Corrigan, and York scheme, Kristen Powell. Um, as Erin mentioned, uh, the MSMA conference is coming up. I'll be in Augusta on Wednesday for the superintendent's portion, and on Thursday for the first part of the MSMA conference. Destiny will also be there on Thursday. Last week, it was a busy end of the week, but trying to get as much of a positive spin of PR out there as possible. I sent out the Main Law's Public Schools video to the board, and we'll be able to post it now. Uh, on their focus and feature was on TFA. They're doing four videos around the state this year, and they chose TFA as their highlight. They came last spring to film it. Um, and we've been able to, John's worked with the Gem Theater, and we're gonna be able to do a public viewing and showing on November tenth. Uh, there's high school parent teacher houses at night, at six thirty. The Gem is gonna open up to the public, and someone from that filming, uh, operation is gonna be there in person as well. There's also a different viewing going on in Limestone at the same time for other things. Um, so it's open to the public to come to the Gem watch on the big screen. Um, the video's a little over twelve minutes long, but it really does highlight. The video is a little over 12 minutes long, but it really does highlight everyone saying a lot of the good about TFA, the good, bad, and the ugly, and just the whole idea of what it, what it is and the reality through the kids' eyes, it really goes to the kids' perspective. So it's, it's, it's pretty entertaining and it's a nice snippet and it's a great highlight piece.
The katastrophe was worth going for. I haven't watched it, it's interesting.
She does okay. Yes, full disclosure, yes, my stepdaughter is one of the kids interviewed in the video. I didn't know the feature that she was going to get, but it's pretty special. And Tora One Mittens, she was not, or is not, a typical TFA child. She is not an outdoorsy person at all, and she went and embraced the challenge, she knew she didn't have a choice, but she learned a lot and she actually can look back and see how much her class, who has an interesting reputation through the years, how much they actually grew and matured, and that they came together much closer through the program because of the project, because of the trips, because of the experiences, and how close they became with their teachers. That was a big surprise for her, how much they bonded as a group. And so it is, it's real. And, you know, she did a canoe trip, she can flip a canoe and paddle a canoe, she did the canoe trip up on Richardson with all the bug bites and sunburns to show for it. She never ever wants to do it again, but she can do it. In fact, that is the biggest thing that we talked about as a family, that the importance of the challenges that are presented and persevering through it and doing things out of your comfort zone, it's a big part of that program provides. So it's really cool. The other big news piece, and Rose is here for the paper, and helping with the PR piece of this, and I shared with you as well, but the high school was ranked as number five in the state of Maine for high schools by US News and World Report. It's a really big deal. It's a really big deal. And for those who've been around long enough, if you think back 12, 15 years ago, when the state came out with the infants report cards, and this high school is ranked with an F rating, to go in that amount of time to now being ranked number five in the state of Maine is a huge accolade to the staff and students. And not just the high school, but everyone feeding up to the high school, it's a whole district takes part of that. But it's a big accomplishment. The US News and World Report goes to the state database every year and they pull their data points that they want, put into their algorithm, and come up with their rankings. There was not anything we were aware of until after they came out, and so we're in celebration phase at this point and trying to get the word out and really pat everyone on the back. It is a huge, a huge deal, and to see the schools that they're up in the top five with and all the schools that they're ahead of in the top 30, gives a lot for this, for this community and for the school district you're really proud of. So it's pretty special. Last week was high school homecoming week. We had amazing weather, kids participated, Saturday was a common activity, field hockey kicked off on Friday night with their homecoming game. Saturday saw both boys and girls soccer and football, all the games in the day on Saturday night, lots of events going on, lots of activity, lots of people on the hillside. And it's been a big thank you to the community for middle school, high school sports in general. This fall, participation and showing up to watch the kids has been absolutely amazing. The hillside is full every single game, and the kids feel it, they notice it, it's pretty special to, and they also get to see the views, and we've had amazing weather, which hasn't hurt, but I know the kids are being taken perspective to stop when they're watching each other, and the nice thing on Saturday is seeing the field hockey team come and watch the soccer teams, everyone go down and watch the football, they all support each other. But they actually realize the surrounding of where we are, when you're up on the hill and the fields to look and see the leaves, the mountains, just the setting that we're in, they actually take a moment to actually appreciate it. And so it's one of those things, they're in it so much, you don't actually stop to look at what's around them. So it's pretty special to see all of that. Right now, we're going into fall playoffs. The football team is going in in second place, they have one more regular season game left. Both high school soccer teams are qualified for playoffs. Both middle school soccer teams are in the conference championships tomorrow against the eastern part of the conference, they won the western division. High school field hockey saw their biggest team in over 10 years, brought in play with a lot of freshmen. There were 17 girls on the roster and I think nine were freshmen. So it's a resurgence of field hockey as well as all the other programs, which is great to see, and middle school field hockey is also growing. So it's a big testament to our coaches for time dedication, but the kids who are willing to get out and be involved and participate, it's really nice to see, it's a great way to kick off the school year. Lots of participation, lots of school pride, so those are all positive things happening right now, we want to see care into the winter and see the successes coming up through the ranks every year and not just in isolation, so lots of bragging rights, lots of good things to report on, and now we can do a PTA report if you'd like.
So, Woodstock PTA, we met a few weeks ago. We went over our budget for the year, it's set to be about $17,000. That has to sit, so we'll vote on that next meeting, so that's, that's money we'll put into the school. We're in need of a vice president, we're still doing the bottle redemption at the Greenwood Woods Dock, always looking for help with that, which is just basically tying up the bags in the little shed and putting them into the big shed, that's all that we need help with. So if you're at the dump and you just see the bags are full in the little dump, you're welcome to just tie them up and throw them in the big shed, very much appreciated.
Little bit goes one way.
Yeah, it does. And we're working on a Halloween party for Halloween Day that we do every year in the school, so, yeah, all good things.
CPS PTA is hitting the ground running, we just finished up our school store, so all of that gear will be going out. And then we are working on piloting a new fundraising model this year, we'll see how that goes. We are working on some business sponsorships and just on Friday put out a request for business sponsorships, just to kind of involve the broader community in, you know, some of the really cool things that we've got going on at school or at the elementary school. Again, pilot program, so we'll kind of see how that goes this year and what the feedback is from that, but I think that's really exciting. One of the things we always look at, which shocked PTA jealousy because their budget is way bigger than ours, because of the effort they put into bottles, so just looking at different, you know, fundraising and revenue sources for our PTA so that we can also offer some of those similar, you know, things. We are working on our birthday gifts, which seem to be really exciting for the kids, their little trinkets that they get. I don't know if I mentioned it last year, but this year they're getting sunglasses, last year they got water bottles, so just a little recognition for their birthdays. What else are we working on? We've got a couple shows that have been lined up for this school year. One of the good things that we have is BAM has been doing an amazing job at bringing a lot of programming into the school, so that has kind of taken a portion of that off of the PTA budget. So BAM is fundraising and sponsoring those events, so we have, you know, PTA has the opportunity to kind of look at like, okay, events are covered, so what else can we, you know, do for the school? We're working on upgrading some of the AV equipment after several events where the AV equipment was less than adequate, so hopefully that will get resolved and just looking at other things that can be for that. So exciting things had for the PTA and we're looking forward to the rest of the year.
Thank you both. And right now, Telstar PTA is in a state of flux and not sure what the size is going to be going forward, it's kind of on pause.
Can I just, in my mind, it seems like, why is there a Boosters and a Telstar PTA? Like, can it just be the Boosters?
Is Boosters just...
Is it that the, the PTA really sponsors all things and Boosters is specifically geared, in my understanding, towards the sports programs?
Yeah.
So that's...
But, in my mind, I have always been thinking that the two should be together because of the size of our school.
Right, I mean, there should be limited parents to show up.
It's the same people that go with each moving.
Right, you might as well just be one parent organization, call it whatever you want to call it.
Yeah, exactly, if it could just be all-inclusive, middle school, high school, it's all sports, academics, school-wide, teachers, students, support, whatever, you know, PTA's, yes, it should be all-inclusive, one group, because we're dividing and it's not working. We got, right now, there's a, there's a strength behind the Boosters, the numbers have grown, and you go to the meeting and there's a large number there, and so that's a shift, which is great, we should use that momentum. I don't know how they go about actually combining the groups or if that's what they want, being a PTA, their teacher association, so, but I would definitely recommend that.
And originally, it was a TMS PTA, which grew to become Telstar Complex, and originally Boosters was actually for the high school, which has now expanded to become, say, 12 Boosters, so...
And, and we have at the high school, you know, to be honest, we've struggled all along to have like a large number of parents come to a PTA meeting, so it's always been the same four or five people for the last decade, so...
What's, like, what's not happening if it's just Boosters, like, what, what would be the essential things that we would like combining that would be missing right now?
Yeah, we, in the past, the PTA has done a teacher appreciation, they, several years ago, sponsored movie nights, which it just became difficult for parents to actually volunteer for those, so I basically took it on and they paid the license. They did Rebel Beer Store, but that's something that TMS can arrange through G and B and make happen. Some fundraising efforts, but then the PTA also tries to be cognizant that in the middle school, primarily in the high school, different classes are also trying to do their own fundraising, so they've tried to step back and not do extra fundraising. It's a, they try to be a conduit for parents and teachers in terms of here's information, you know, staying involved with what's happening at school and their kids, because also they show up in the middle school and stop talking about what's happening in school.
Have there been like, parents and teachers, or is it usually just...
It's mostly parents who come to the meetings, and then there have been times when there have been more administrators present than parents. Way back, like, almost 15 years, sometimes we have a teacher come and share, here's a way that, you know, the PTA might be able to help with a project or something.
So, I guess I'm just saying, because it's not really, like, I know it's called PTA, but there's not necessarily teachers involved.
No, not at...
Historically, so like, if the Boosters were sort of expanded, it's not like we're losing something.
I can say that, I don't know, having two students come through here, I've been to the PTA meetings over the last decade, and very rarely will you see a teacher test.
Do teachers go to the...
Yeah, there's actually a lot of teachers, but I don't know if they're coming as a teacher or as a parent of kids.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, no, I mean, they're...
They have kids. I would say half of our, half of our regular attendees for PTA meetings are teachers, and they happen to have kids in it.
There are a few that don't, but most of them have kids in school.
Yeah, no, it's just interesting that it's always called PTA, but like, I feel like it's always a parent organization, like, everywhere, not just here, so...
It's that challenge, it's, it's, at the end of the road, I mean, the PTA started in the middle school 15 years ago and it died out, it came back again, and then it expanded because the officers and their kids kind of moved up to high school, so they kept going to decide that we're in the building and might as well expand it to everybody. And, but they've all kind of graduated and moved on, and other people just haven't stepped up behind them to continue, that's what, you know, they get challenged, but as John was pointing out, and I think you see this with the high school students as well, you get the same group of parents trying to do everything, just like you have the same group of kids trying to be the class officers in all the clubs, playing the sports teams, and they burn themselves out, and there's only so much fundraising you can do and only so many asks you can put out to the community who are very, very, very good about trying to step up, but they get tapped up too. And, and I think trying to find that, that balance and that dichotomy of where does everything fit? And if, if they are able to combine and just do a subcommittee maybe and focus on some other pieces, it's, they have to really have to sit down and think about it, each have their own bylaws and check the accounts and all those things that move forward, but, you know, it could be, at this point, it's not a functioning organization, so...
What seems like the big fundraiser is the teacher appreciation? Go PTA.
Yeah, I think some of the biggest budget items would be, there's a movie license, that is $500, $500, yeah, doing a teacher appreciation thing, whatever you decide in this, in this spring. Our PTA used to also, way back, we, when NWA, we had NBA testing, when they would do a pancake breakfast for their kids. Things have improved, in my opinion, in terms of standardized testing and the burden that it plays on kids, so that we reduce, it's not a whole day of testing anymore, it's an hour and a half, and we spread that out from one day, one week, and then another hour and a half next week, so people can really do a pancake breakfast, it takes longer than the test. They did little booby bags and stuff, but it's okay that it's, you know...
And that concludes my superintendent's report.
We do not have any other things to tend to, so we'll move on to new business and adjustments to the agenda. I propose that we change agenda item currently number eight to agenda item number nine, and add the following motion as agenda item number eight, to see what action the board wishes to take regarding entering a workshop session to discuss attendance and social activities hosted by schools. Do I have a second?
One second, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Fair. Is there any discussion on adding this item to the agenda? Seeing none, all of those in favor of making the proposed changes? Thank you, Ms. Fair. Moving on to agenda item number three, to see what action the board wishes to take regarding the first reading of policy AD mission statement, and the Policy Committee will have a recommendation.
Oh, Policy, Policy Committee recommends approval, and again, it is, it's the all the way through to the back, the second paragraph is the new part, the rest is the history and progression of certain policies.
We do not need a second, we have the recommendation from the Policy Committee, so open the floor for discussion. I'm sure it is in there.
Here's my motion, this will be there.
Sure.
You were heard.
Questions, feedback, comments? Seeing none, all of those in favor of approving the first reading of policy AD mission statement? Thank you, Ms. Fair. Number four, to see what action the board wishes to take regarding the second reading of policy KF, Community Use of District Facilities, and KF dash EI, and KF dash, oh, E1, sorry, and KF dash E2, Building Use Forms, and the Policy Committee will have a recommendation.
Policy Committee recommends approval.
Any discussion?
I'm, I'm excited for this to actually go out to the public so they can see that they can use the space and it's free, it's really cool. I have like this. Anyone, well, they hear free, they might.
Any other comments and questions?
I would just point out the one clarification, initially we went through this, the order was jumbled up, and the policies in between were two forms, so I just rearranged it, but since you do have a policy and then have forms separate, I could list them this time around in the motion just to make sure that it's clarified that we're, they may have been voting on both of them, so. And just rearranged the packet, so when they get the policies first, then there are two forms follow up. The first form is what anyone who wants to use the space is for, the second form, EF2, would be for the administrators or whatever states it'd be to approve on, and figure out after I agree, you're trying to say go with it. So, just as a housekeeping thing, just want to make sure that was clear to everybody.
Sure, I can just, I can get some of this put on.
Yeah, so I'll fill in this.
I don't know.
Okay.
Do you have a question?
Well, I know, I did, I didn't want to catch some testing, these testing.
Questions, comments? Seeing none, all of those in favor of approving the second reading of policies KF, and KF dash E1, and KF dash E2. Thank you, to Ms. Moving on to number five, to see what action the board wishes to take regarding board goals for the 2025, 2026 school year, in co- in accordance with policy ADA, school district goals and objectives, and the policy committee will have a recommendation.
Policy committee recommends approval. Um, and this is just to kind of make sure that, um, everything we discussed in our last workshop was represented, and if we said something that you don't think is represented, um, when we get to what is now agenda item nine, um, say so, and we'll get in.
Any additions or any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, all of those in favor of approving board goals for the 2025, 2026 school year? Thank you, to Ms. Number six, to see what action the board wishes to take regarding the superintendent's suggested prices for the sale of laptops to staff at one fifty, or a hundred and fifty per device, and the public at two hundred per device, with a limit of no more than two devices per individual. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
Anything else to make out, open the floor for discussion?
I assume you found some sort of market value for these, somewhat, right?
The, yeah, so the average retail price could be anywhere from two hundred to four hundred dollars for these used devices. It's, the idea was to make sure it was affordable, and, and we've had a lot of graduated students asking if they can get devices for school, if you're looking for affordable Christmas gifts. These devices have all been screened, and make sure they're actually in good working order. We have devices that are not so, that we will use the reseller for, either not functioning or broken, but these are all worthy of being used, they sell life to them, um, so we figured it's more important to get on people's hands, and any of the money will go back into the program for next year as part of the refresh for the high school transition, uh, as revenue. And so, this was, after going through the refresh last year and using the reseller, um, we kind of thought we could do better by selling to the public, versus trying to go through the reseller, we didn't make as much on it as we thought we would. They will still take unworking device, non-working devices and broken devices, and we get something out of it, versus us having to pay the recycler. Um, so, it's fair to nothing, um, but this will just allow for working laptops, chargers, and cases to be sold to people, so.
But how many are up for sale?
Uh, we have. Hundred and fifty.
Thank you.
Yep. And we kept some, this, they're not all for sale yet, because we have kept a allotment for spares and for, um, damage control, because the current price of laptops would be on their warranty, and so to keep it all in-house, and then we'll have another round next year. Um, if it goes to the budget that we plan to refresh the high school devices with iPads, we'll be able to do this again one more time next year.
How do you go about advertising the sale?
So, once the board approves this tonight, we'll be putting it out on Facebook and a website, and it might make it in paper too.
Is there any priority to who they go to, or no?
Uh, no, it's local, and trying to make sure that there's a different price for staff and students, um, and then will be recent graduates as well, versus general.
Homeschooled students? Same practice?
General public.
So, sorry, um, students and former students are included with staff for about a hundred and fifty dollars.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments?
I think it's great, we bought one, I don't know, three years ago, or whenever we did, the film.
Maybe two.
Yeah, they're, you know, they're not using it. Right plays on or something.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor of approving the suggested prices for laptops for sale? Thank you, to Ms. Number seven, to see what action the board wishes to take regarding moving the December fifteenth, 2025 meeting to December eighth, 2025, in order to control the winter dance recycle. Do I have a motion?
Oh, I.
It's yours.
And all the dance log? I make a motion.
You have a second.
I'll second as a dancer.
Discussion. This works for everybody.
So, just make sure the facilities committee, they'll meet in four, this.
We'll shoot, it's always me and the match, so we don't have a conflict, still, yeah.
You don't get out of here laid up.
All of those in favor of moving the December fifteenth meeting to December eighth? Thank you, everyone, to Ms. Number eight, to see what action the board wishes to take regarding entering a workshop session to discuss attendance of social activities hosted by schools? Thank you. Thank you, Bethany. Do I have a second?
One second.
Anything else to make, I'm not open the floor for discussion. And the purpose, Mark and I both have had community members and board members reach out to us concerning attendance at social activities, which would be outside of regular, extracurricular activities, and quite frankly, this isn't in our wheelhouse, but our input is important, so I figured discussion would be an opportunity for us to, you know, air concerns, ask questions, and, and get our sentiments out there. So, I welcome any thoughts, questions that you may have, that.
Can you clarify, like, what's considered a social activity and what kids are possibly currently prevented from attending that aren't students? Like, I, I'm, I'm not sure what the actual issue is, but we need to just go.
Currently, right now, and we, we don't allow guest passes to the activity nights. So, in the middle school right now, it's two dances a year, Halloween dance and a spring dance, and there are three other activity nights. Usually, there's a fall activity, winter, and another spring one, if, if we have enough volunteers to, we will demand them. But the kids are on Friday night, it's two hours on Friday night, usually, depending, um, some are after school, some are in the evening, depending on the activity, some are done. So, it's just, the student leadership committee usually organizes, there's a version of student council in middle school. Um, and then, middle school staff teams have been asked to volunteer and to pick one activity each year to try and just be present at, um, for shop on purposes, and pick an activity they want to do. Um, recently, the eighth grade team took their fall activity, and they went halloween picking, and they took any kids in middle school who wanted to go after school to go halloween picking, and they were back in time for leap bus. Um, the next one is, thank, this Friday is the Halloween dance, which is the first student leadership activity of the year. Um, wintertime activities, you'd date a sliding party, uh, sometimes local in the spring or winter thing on bowling, uh, down to Stars and Stripes in South Paris, and then it's usually a spring, a clean dance. Dodgeball tournament, too. That's student leadership activity from day to day.
And currently, there's, like, it's teachers and there's the chaperones for these types of events?
Teachers and administrators, and there are some parents who volunteer that come in and chaperone, yes.
So, currently, if I had a homeschooled, um, child, um, they, at the elementary and middle school level, they could not attend?
Correct.
But at the high school level, they could.
With a guest pass?
With a guest pass, yes, with paperwork.
The high school, they can, with the right vetting, they can go to the.
Yes.
What's the guest pass? No, no, well, like, what, but what does that mean to get a guest pass?
There's a, there's a form that fill out a request of the high school administration to vet a guest who does not go to school here, and then come to one of the dances, um, high school has, we just had homecoming last Saturday, they have their winter carnival dance, and they have prom. Those are three dances.
So, X C D, um, has a group of friends that went to the world, and those kids knew their friends and wanted to come to the dance, and so, three of their friends that currently go to THS, um, just went down to the office, filled out, like, here's my name, here's their name, contact information, um, and then they were able to come to the dance.
So, these are two different things, because a guest pass, like, in theory, could be a cousin that's visiting, or, right? Versus a homeschool, is a kid in the district that's being homeschooled that wants to attend, just to make sure.
Yes, it's different.
These are different things, right?
It's just a, yeah, if one's happening.
The question is why is that? Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I, I see, like, we're a small district, so, you, you know, encouraging kids to be social, especially if they're playing sports, I can understand. I think my, having been a teacher, I think a concern I would have is like, as a person who has chaperoned middle school, and like, you know, like, the, that age, having students that you don't know, that you're now in charge of, would be, like, I can see why this probably hasn't been allowed in the past. I don't know, it seems like the sort of thing that administrators and teachers would have more input on than we would. I mean, we're not the ones showing up to, I mean, I can show up to activity night, but I mean, like, in theory, it's not us, so.
So, I've actually chaperoned, um, most of the middle school dances since my son started, he's now in eighth grade, um, so I can attest to kind of how those middle school dances run, um, they're a lot of fun, but, you know, they're a bunch of middle school kids hyped up on sugar, and they're kind of crazy, um, Halloween in particular is one that I have attended each year, um, and will probably attend Friday. You know, the kids are in costumes, if you don't know those children's, you know, ma- you know, mannerisms and their voice, you don't necessarily recognize them, so I think that, you know, the staff has, you know, a one-up knowing these children, and being able to, like, mitigate things that could potentially happen before they happen, you know? Lindsay and, and the staff are really good at knowing which kids need, like, a break before, you know, things kind of get out of hand, which kids might be more handsy and need to be, you know, paid attention to, which kids shouldn't be in the corners. Um, so to invite outside kids, I think, to, to middle school dances could potentially, you know, pose a risk, I can see why they would be a little nervous with that, you know? Not necessarily knowing the kids, and obviously, if you open it up to, like, one great kid, you've got to open it up to everybody, and so, just remembering that, that was kind of my thought process on it, um, and as far as, like, elementary school goes, you know, I obviously do the, the Woodstock in-school Halloween, um, activity, which again, is a bunch of elementary school kids, we don't provide sugar that day, because it's in school and it's during school hours, um, but they're really, really excited, and they've got a lot of energy, and, um, you know, same thing, you know, the people that are there, they know the kids, they're able to, you know, tell who has higher needs than others, and so, bringing in outside children could potentially also make that kind of chaotic, so I, I can see, where again, we're a small community, and, you know, some of the kids our students might know, they might have been with us before and then left the district, but once you open it up, you know, to some kids, it's opened up to, you know, maybe all kids, and I don't, you know, could be somebody just moving into the district that is homeschooling, and that kid might potentially cause some issues, so, I don't know, that's just my take on it.
Scott?
You know, I, I agree with what you're saying, but the one thing is, my understanding, I, I talked to Mark today, these kids are already playing on teams, so, I'm starting to put two and two together with earlier part of the agenda, you know, how do you say no, you can't go to the, you're already interacting every day, or wherever, wherever they, how often they practice a week, or whatever they do, but they know each other, so I guess it's sort of a, it's a tough call, it's a tough call.
Kids know each other, but not the teacher.
Well, I understand too, and I think the principal have final say, who's there, but.
I, I'm struggling with the discussion that we're assuming these kids are bad, like, we're going in there being like, they can cause problems, and that's why they shouldn't go. That's a rough thing to say about a kid, we're punishing the children, the parents made this choice more than likely, and we're punishing the children from the social aspect. That's a struggle for me, I, my, my child has a homeschool friend, and if he wanted to go to something, kid is a Ferguson saint, and I would have no problem with him going to anything that I would, I would be at, um, but we're just assuming that these kids are going to cause problems. There's an easy thing, like, if you want your kid to go to an event, you have to chaperon it, like, it's pretty easy to, like, the parent has to be there.
Were background checked with those people before they come in?
Do we background check parents that go?
Volunteer, we're background checks, yes, yes.
Yeah, okay, then we could do that, that, that's fine, but like, there's ways around it, but all the discussion that I keep on hearing is about.
I don't think that's, I don't think that's true, like, I don't think it means that they're bad, it's just that, like, it is actually very hard to manage children when you don't know their names, when you don't, like, I don't think there's any, there's not like idea that they should.
But we're like, it's a punishment to the child.
I think having parents come would be great, but like, having, if you're, if you're opting out of the system, but then dropping your kid off at a school dance, like, I, a little bit, I'm kind of like, oh, like, you want us to come to the dance?
You're opting out of the educational part, there's, there's the laws that built in the protections for all the other things, and they're for a reason. This is a gray area and that, but there's laws for specifically because they should have interaction, and this is because it's not completely school-run, that's the, that's why it's not protected, but everything else is for the social aspect, so it's just hard to, like, say you're, you can do all these things, but you can't do this, because the parents want a different educational choice, like, it's, it's just a punishment to the child, I think, and it's, it's hard to, hard to hear that. Like, and then we also, like, I mean, every single document we have talks about inclusion in all of our buildings, like, everything we have policies on talk about inclusion, and we're telling people, you're not actually, it, it's just tough. I don't, I, I like public schools, it's not my thing for homeschooling, but I, I just would, I would want the children, we talked about, it's all about the children, just because they're not educated with us, it shouldn't be without the children, that's my take.
I mean, I agree with that, like, if they're allowed to play on the sports teams, but then they're not allowed to go to the dance in middle school, that seems a little, that's tough. Like, you're on the sports team, and we said a game, and everybody's going to the dance tonight, but now you can't go, as your homeschool kid, like, that seems unfair. I think it would be good to talk about or brainstorm ways to possibly say yes versus going down on any other. Like, like, what would we have to do to make it okay? Have the parent come, do the background check, do the paperwork, I mean, how many kids are we talking about in middle, up approximately? Middle and, uh, elementary school, homeschool students in our district, is there like a ballpark?
We have forty-two students that are like, K-12, I don't have, I.
Yeah, yeah.
I could look right now, there's, there, look up today, we have forty-two who live in the four towns. Whether they've ever been here, or have always been in a homeschool pack, we have forty-two families, or forty-two individual students that would fall into that category.
Is there like a rough percentage of that that are already engaged, like, come in for extra, um, electives and participate in sports and stuff, is that a minority?
Right, well, I don't know this year, but my past experience, we have a handful of kids each season looking for sports. We don't currently have, I know of, have anyone coming in to do any UAs or any clubs or electives, we've had in the past, but I don't believe there's any initiative in middle school high school. That's one of the options they have as homeschooling, we have in the past. Um, I don't believe there's any big taking advantage of that this time around, so. And I think part of, yes, this is not about individual students or families or anything in particular, it's just trying to figure out, as a school system, what is our responsibility, how far does it go to, to cover all the aspects of those who make choices, and their choices are choices for family and their reasons, but, um, where, how much of a line, or is there a line, or is it not a line, as to what our responsibilities are as a school to provide all those pieces?
I mean, those families are still paying taxes.
Hey, we all, we all, we all pay for it.
Right, like, they're still paying for it, so, to say like, well, you chose to homeschool your kid, you're still paying it, but you can't participate in certain things, I, that's a lot. Like, I think our job should be to find a way to yes.
What's the vetting process for the sports?
They just live in the area? They have, they're, they just, they would fill out the same paperwork that all the other kids fill out, so you have all the background information, you have their physicals, you have all their contact information, um.
So, couldn't it just be as simple as adding that in there? That they can be doing all those activities, if we're going to let them play sports, rather than let them go to a dance?
That's part of this conversation, just trying to figure, that's just, you know, who's, yeah, we, and already the paperwork, they have to be in, we have it all digital now, so we have to find a way to not enroll them, you know, put the forms out, but, then we can go through and process it all.
Do we have, what records do we have for homeschool?
Do we have, what records do we have for homeschooled kids? Only medical records if they're participating in sports?
They would fill out the same paperwork for athletics. There's four forms they have to fill out. Any students doing athletics have to fill out the same forms.
But without athletics, we don't have any health records for homeschooled students?
No, if they're not coming in the week, I think. All we have is the application. We have an email either through our office or in the state that they show up in the database if they are choosing homeschooling.
And in your email to us, you said that you cited medical records as one of the reasons for the students. Further, there'd be a liability, but we have them, right?
We would put in sports. We wouldn't have it if they're not in a sports roster.
Do you happen to know what other districts do? Do they allow?
Uh, it's a variety. I haven't had a chance to read that, which I've sent Friday to the districts, but.
So for context, state law requires access to sports.
Full curriculum, extracurricular, yes.
And other things that are recognized in budget one way or another, stipends and things. And then if you're in the district, you live here physically, you could be in the homeschool, but you could also come in and participate in, in, but there's nothing in law about dances.
There's nothing, there's nothing specifically in a lot of the policy that's outlet, points out piece out, not. It just has a full curriculum, extracurricular.
You know, the point, I just, it was interesting, Mark, I spoke today, I also learned that the, so the school personnel involved with dances, they're not on paid status, unlike other events where there are paid status. I don't know if they're media or not, but that's kind of the context. I appreciate Mark cutting time and stuff.
I mean, it's the difference between it being like a social event, right, versus an extracurricular. I mean, is it possible for us to get feedback from the people that actually like what they want? I guess I'm not, not like, I guess I'm not, like, it feels a little odd to me that like, we make this decision without any need to help or, well, why are we discussing it without input of the like administrators and the people that have to show up for the social events and.
We welcome it. It was requested by enough people that we put on the agenda, but to take formal action regarding this isn't really our wheelhouse. It's still the administration's decision. So we wanted to provide the opportunity to have this conversation. And stemming off what you had said, Destiny, I don't necessarily feel like what's applicable for one is applicable for all. And I do recognize the need for anyone helping out at the dance in any capacity to know those kids, especially if they're costumed up. So I, and I'm just trying to think of possible solutions taking a similar approach to what's been adopted at high school with guest pass, where ultimately the administration has that discretion. They can bet and they can say no. It can allow zero guests, they can allow ten, they can, but it isn't opening up to a certain category of people to. Because I think it's entirely fair to say that it, you know, it was meant for the students at the school, but there's the possibility of allowing guests.
Another thing you said, Mark, was middle school students not being able to advocate for rides? Is that our responsibility?
Sometimes you'd be surprised how we're waiting for parents to pick up. I've seen Lindsay there very, very late trying to call emergency contacts, parents.
Is that a responsibility?
Well, we can't leave them. We've been here an hour, hour and a half sometimes. We've given kids rides home. I mean, over the many years, just because a kid calls and no answer. So there's no way to home and.
Is it any different at a sports event?
We have some kids that after practice that don't, but in the evening, at least, you know, practice or games, the late bus is an option or it's semi daylight, but when you're eight-thirty at night after clean up, it just puts a situation, maybe nine to ten o'clock sometime. It just, it's rare, but it does happen to some kids and miscommunication with home and student, there's all sorts of different factors that come into that, but if they're here on school property, we're not going to leave and turn the lights out and can't leave for the janitors to, to deal with, so. It just becomes, it just, I'm not being clear, it just becomes a responsibility.
Time on the clock, I don't see what the difference is though between that and that.
But it's not time on the clock for social learning. I think that's the difference. Like it's, it's. You know, like I, I guess I just like, it, the curriculums and the things we pay for makes sense to me, the activities I'm just like less comfortable with because I feel like we're kind of, we're already asking, it's not an expected thing from our staff in the first place to be like, having activity nights, taking our kids bowling and sledding and doing dances. And so to me, it feels like an extra burden when people who are already going above what's expected, right? So that I guess, the most apparent was reported.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm like, if, if the parent's there, it cuts out a lot of that, what else? If the requirement is you have to be there for.
Then they won't miss a ride.
Right. Yeah, if they're acting up, you take them away, if there are rides there, like, there's ways, yeah. I mean, if it's that important for their child to go to social, the parent will make sure they adhere to the rules that are set, is all. There's ways to say yes, and it might be strict ways to say yes, but there's ways that we can give them option.
So does admin have like, what is their wheelhouse of like allowance? Can they make it like a very specific criteria? Like, you know, do we have their back in a situation where they, you know, trying, somebody comes along and says, no, you're, you're discriminating, you're excluding my kid. Like, well, you don't meet this very specific criteria. Like can we say, you know, can admin say a parent has to be there or, you know, have to have already played sports for the, you know, seasons, we already have your record. Or like, is there, you know, how much can they really differ between, you know, these specific kids are okay or this specific situation is okay to just like, we have to allow, you know, anyone. I just, that's where I, how much, you know, can they change that? How much rule can they? Do you have any insight to that, Mark?
At this point, as far as where the policy lies, there are no specific guidelines. So we'd have to craft something that, that they're comfortable with and they feel like they can enforce and be consistent with.
Good news. But discrimination of saying you can do it with these guidelines and saying you can't do it at all.
Right. Yeah, no, that's what I, yeah, like, I mean, I, I agree with like, obviously, yes is always a good answer, but.
With the high school guest passes, they have to contact the school and make sure they're understanding.
High school, we don't have an issue. I mean, we really don't. We use guest passes. You fill out a guest pass. Everybody, if you want to bring somebody, you have to fill out a pass, it comes in, and we'll call the school and check them out. They're registered in schools. So, um, the principals, the vice principals will tell us what, how these students are, and recommend not. They, I get phone calls from other high school principals too, asking about our kids to go to their dances. Oxford Hills, Mountain Valley, Jericho. And they ask us, what's your student like? Are they academically solid? Behaviorally, are they okay? And you have to, you have to tell them, yes or no. Would you, would you invite them to your dance?
This is regarding homeschool students, not other schools.
If they're at homeschool, I would have, I would call, we'd have to call home too. And yeah, I mean, we, at the high school, we want the kids there. I, I think that every level is different. And I hate to put the middle school and high school ever on the same field because developmentally, kids are different and then, and I don't like to cross over into the younger age because that's not my realm. At the high school level, we want, we don't want, we don't want middle schools out of high school. We don't want people inviting eighth graders. So that's inappropriate. We don't want people over twenty out of, out of dances. But yeah, but you know what? If somebody's a senior and a, and a boyfriend, girlfriend, whatever, just, just graduated, yeah, we'd love it if that person was able to come back, you know, and come, yeah. Or if they've got friends at Oxford Hills or whatnot, wherever, I would love them to come here and, and socialize with our, our kids and experience our school. Maybe I'll get them to transfer here, you know? Yeah, so, um, I think it's a different world than the middle school and elementary and I hate to stay in the same in that world.
And at the end of the day, it's obviously an admin decision. This is just a discussion that if there was something overheard, like, oh, maybe we could look into that or afterwards, like, still doesn't seem feasible. And, you know, it's just a discussion. Obviously we're not voting, we're not overstepping. Um, this is an admin decision, a hundred percent.
It is, but there's a dance Friday night. And somebody was here earlier once we leave. And it seems like there's no practical reason to prohibit the children, the young, young, young kid, women, whatever. I don't know. It just seems like there's got to be a way to respect the administration, respect the principals and everybody, but also, I don't know. How do you, how do you say no? They're all playing together, they're all laughing together, whatever they do. I don't know. So that's my thought. But it could be fixed or changed. I guess that's the only thing. Well, the vote tonight, we can change it. You might have, and he's got a personal problem that day, but that's, that's a separate. I don't know.
It's not for vote.
Yeah, we're not voting on anything tonight in this regard. The only vote we had was to enter into this discussion. We're not looking to change policy or force anyone saying we're just looking to have a conversation.
The person, they're, they're not going to get relief then. Unless there's some discretion of administrators.
Beginning of a conversation.
I mean, I think there's ways that can be done. And I think we should, we should find a way or someone should find a way to make that possible.
Good luck, Mark. You know how we feel.
If that being said, is there anything else we'd like to add to this discussion? Any other questions, statements?
I'd like to see the kids go to the dance. I think there's a difference between in this discussion probably in my mind, any homeschool kids and call guests, like out of town. There maybe is a difference there. And, but if we can get a reference.
Do we maybe even require the parents to do attend? Even if it's just, you know, if it's going to be somebody who wants to participate all through middle school, maybe in sixth grade, you know, the parent does start to attend to just to get a feel for the child or if there's an issue or how, how it could work.
Something else, I guess, you know, we're fortunate to be able to know all the students, the teachers and stuff, but that's just fortunate. That's not reality for most places. I'm sure most schools take in about half the students and they just come in. So I know it's, it feels good and it's nice, but maybe this feels good.
Any further discussions at all? While that may be your case, we'll end this conversation for the time being. And move on to number nine. To see what action the board wishes to take regarding entering into an executive session for a periodic review on the bullet that's super connected to schools. Section one, MRSA, board, five, six, A. Do I have a motion? Any questions? Any discussion? All those in favor of entering to an executive session to discuss superintendent schools? Thank you. We will take a very brief recess for everyone's side. The board members to exit for us.